The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant at Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Tim Martin, Pastor, Truth and Grace Fellowship, Broadway, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, Creator and Sustainer of life, Author and Finisher of our salvation, we pause in this moment to acknowledge you and to declare your sovereignty over our lives, our homes, our communities, our state, and our nation. We give you praise for who you are and thanks for all you have and will accomplish on our behalf. The psalmist declared, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord," a sentiment shared by our founding fathers. May these our duly-elected legislators keep you and your holy word at the forefront of their decision-making so that our great Commonwealth may continue to experience blessing and be a blessing to you and to our nation. When they and we, the citizens of the Commonwealth, depart from your precepts, grant us grace to humble ourselves and pray, to seek your face and turn from our wicked ways so that you will hear from heaven and will forgive our sin and heal our land. We also ask that you watch over and provide for their families during these eight-week-long absences, and let their weekend reunions be filled with rest, refreshing, love, and laughter. May we, their constituents, live out the words of the Apostle Paul in 1 Thessalonians 5:12, "To respect those who work hard among you by keeping them and their families in our thoughts and prayers." And last of all, I pray the promise of Proverbs 3:5 over these men and women and all who are within hearing distance of my voice. Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make your paths straight. In the precious name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic The clerk shall close the roll.
Madam Speaker, Aquaram is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I have examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Thursday, January 30, 2020. Motions and resolutions under 39 pursuant to Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the first morning hour order of business, including any clerk's announcements or communications.
First morning hour order of business pursuant to House Rule 40, the Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak buttons to be recognized. I have no announcements.
The delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Rasool, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, today we have with us in the gallery representatives from the Virginia Dental Hygienist Association. If they could please rise. The VDHA is visiting us today for their annual Rally Day. Their mission is to lead transformation of dental hygiene profession to improve the public's oral health and overall health and advance the science and practice of dental hygiene. Almost 100 hygienists from around the Commonwealth have visited with us today to advocate for better dental care. And Mr. Speaker, as the husband of a very successful and talented dental hygienist, I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute to urge everyone to make an appointment, to see their dentists and dental hygienists, to get their teeth cleaned, but please eat a lot of candy.[356.03][356.03](Laughter) I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to join me in giving them a warm
Welcome to the Virginia Dental Hygienist Association, VDH day, DHA. Enjoy your Rally Day today, and thanks for being with us and for what you do. Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, today with us, we have the Virginia Virtual Academy. It's a K-12 virtual public school based here in Virginia. And they're not just here today celebrating National School Choice Week, but also celebrating their 10-year anniversary. 10 years ago, the Virginia Virtual Academy only had a handful of staff and faculty and only about 90 students. Today, they have an enrollment of about 2,300 students, including students from almost every school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I ask that they would please rise, and this body would please extend them a warm
Welcome to the Virginia Virtual Academy, and congratulations on your 10th year. Enjoy your day in Capitol Square. Delegate from Fredericksburg, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Cole, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Joining us today in the gallery, we have students from Changing Stafford's Roads. Stafford's Roads, Changing Stafford's Roads is a nonpartisan student-led organization for the improvement of secondary roads. They formed after the tragic death of their friend Helen Wang on May 16 of this past year on her way home from celebrating her birthday. She was killed by a 32-ton loaded truck because of overgrown vegetation, and they are the brain children behind my HB 284, and I am glad they're joining us today. I would ask them to stand, and that the House will give them a warm House welcome.[486.49][486.49](Applause)
Welcome to these impressive young student activists, Changing Stafford's Roads. I hope you know that what you do really does make a difference. Enjoy your day here. The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for an announcement.
Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, members of the General Assembly, I am announcing, this is a request from DMV, to announce the DMV-to-go, the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Office on Wheels, will be here again, once again, next week to process real ID applications or any other DMV transaction. They'll be here Monday, February 3 through Friday, February 7, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Bank Street between the Capitol and the Pocahontas Building. When they were here last week, they completed nearly 200 transactions, more than half of which were real IDs. Beginning October 1, 2020, Virginia will need a real ID compliant credential or a federal-approved form of identification such as U.S. passport, military IDs, to board a domestic flight or enter a secure federal facility. Some military installations have already been stopped, have already stopped accepting noncompliant identification displaying federal limits applied. So all applicants for real ID compliance credentials, including Carman Virginia credential holders, would need to bring physical documentations of the following. Identity and legal presence, such as an uninspired U.S. passport or birth certificate, social security number, two proofs of residency, or proof of any name change. I just want to remind you of that and encourage, if you need to get your real ID, to make sure you bring the necessary credentials to do that on next week. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate McQuinn. Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
Speaker, rise for a motion.
Delegate Bell, you have the floor.
I have been informed that my House Bill 661 needs the good review of the Appropriations Committee, so I don't know how to, if that's a motion I would make or just be the chair, but I would move that it be re-referred to the Appropriations Committee at the request of such committee. I'm sorry, House Bill 661, my bill on page 25.
All those in favor of referring HB 661 to House Appropriations, say aye. All those opposed, HB 661 will be referred to House Appropriations. Delegate from Rockbridge, Delegate Campbell.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, we have a gentleman with us in the back of the floor here. He spent 16 years in this body representing the same district that I am currently representing, and I'd like for y'all to give a warm welcome to Congressman Ben Klein.[684.69][684.69](Applause)
Great to see our friend, former colleague, and Congressman Ben Klein. Welcome back to Capitol Square, the other Capitol Square. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegate Weber. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested to regular calendar. Page 3 of the calendar, House Bill 104 moves to the regular calendar. Page, page 38 of the calendar, House Bill, I'm sorry, that's wrong. Those are all of the moves for today.
Delegate from Enrico, Delegate Bagby.
Madam Speaker, I rise for the purpose of, point of personal privilege. I'm not ready yet.
Okay. No problem. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third morning hour order of business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests for legislation to go by for the day and the subsequent motion by the majority leader. Page 11 of the calendar, House Bill 166 goes by for the day. Page 12 of the calendar, House Bill 549. Page 16 of the calendar, House Bill 634. Page 27 of the calendar, House Bill 941. Page 32 of the calendar, House Bill 134. Page 33 of the calendar, House Bill 7. Page 38 of the calendar, House Bill 1049. Page 38 of the calendar, House Bill 1217. Page 40 of the calendar, House Bill 1333. Page 41 of the calendar, House Bill 1429.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the legislation announced by the clerk go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that legislation as just announced from the clerk, go by for the day. As many as favor, the motion will say aye. As many as oppose, the motion is agreed to. The clerk shall announce the next morning hour order of business.
Fourth morning hour order of business. The next order of business is recognition of member requests for points of personal privilege. The Speaker requests members use their Request to Speak buttons to be recognized.
The delegate from Enrico, Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the point of, for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Bagby, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As we approach Black History Month, I am reminded of the legacy of those that have come before us. During the celebration of our collective history, a light has shined upon the significant impact that African-Americans have made on the history of our lives here in the Commonwealth and our country. Recently, we lost an individual that was a giant among us, Kobe Bean Bryant. And while I'll be short, because it's on Friday, it's important for us not only to reflect the work that he done, he did on the court, but also what he did off the court. A lot of individuals don't know he was committed to preserving black history. He visited the black museums across the country often. He not only gave his time, but he also gave his treasure. We have an opportunity here in the General Assembly to do the same thing. We have museums across the Commonwealth that need our support. He not only did that, but he also looked to the future, supporting individuals with his member mentality. And so, I'm going to be really short, we have the same opportunity here to support individuals in education through HBCUs, through K-12. And so, Madam Speaker, we will have a number of speeches in the next month, and I hope that individuals will learn more about the contributions of African-Americans in the Commonwealth. And with that, member out. Thank you, Madam Speaker.[1003.73][1003.73](Applause)
The clerk will call the calendar.
House calendar for January 31. House bills on third reading uncontested calendar. Page 1, House Bill 146. Page 2, House Bill 63. House Bill 94. House Bill 103. Page 3, House Bill 104. 117, House Bill 477. Page 4, House Bills 610. House Bill 611. House Bill 721. Page 5, House Bill 742. House Bill 743. House Bill 752. Page 6, House Bill 861. House Bill 863. House Bill 870. Page 7, House Bill 880. House Bill 1002. Page 8, House Bill 1023. House Bill 1182. House Bill 1222. Page 9, House Bill 1247. House Bill 1324. House Bill 1330. Page 10, House Bill 1336. House Bill 1376. House Bill 1401. Page 11, House Bill 1437. House Bill 1725.
Delegate from Spansylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I request that House Bill 104 on page 3 be moved to the regular calendar.
House Bill 104 will be moved to the regular calendar.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero, the bills pass.
House bills on third reading regular calendar. Page 11, House Bill 166, by for the day. Page 12, House Bill 549, by for the day. Page 12, House Bill 630, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.2422 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 13.1 of Title 30, a section numbered 30129.7 related to registered lobbyist sexual harassment training.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 66, nays 32, abstentions zero.
Ayes 66, nays 32, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 13, House Bill 789, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 6.2303 and other sections of the Code of Virginia and to repeal Sections 6.21818 of the Code of Virginia relating to open-end credit plans, payday lenders and short-term loans, consumer finance loans, car title lending.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 65, nays 33, abstentions zero.
Ayes 65, nays 33, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 150, a bill to amend and reenact Section 15.2907.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to derelict residential buildings' civil penalty.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 59, nays 40, abstentions zero.[1301.11][1301.11](Applause)
Ayes 59, nays 40, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 14, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 22.1177 of the Code of Virginia relating to public school buses' seat belts.
Shall the bill pass?
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, I would like to rise for a motion.
Delegate Kresek, you have the floor.
I would like to take by for the day HB 15. My good friend Delegate Ferris and I are going to make a little fix to it. He's promised to work with me on that, and so hopefully on Monday, we'll be ready.
I believe, Delegate, we will need to reconsider engrossment in order to do that. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
So, Madam Speaker, I, preliminary inquiry. So the motion to pass by for the day doesn't require an amendment to reconsider, but if in fact the intent is to amend the bill, that can only happen on second read, and so I think what you're suggesting is that Delegate Kresek's motion might be to first reconsider the vote by which it was engrossed and then take it by for the day. Is that what the Speaker's suggesting?
Exactly. Delegate Simon.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that okay with the delegate from Alexandria?
Madam Speaker, so I'd like to, I think, put it on the prevailing side, I move that we, what do we do? We take it by for the day.[1398.48][1398.48](Laughter)
Reconsider.
Yeah, bring it back, engross it and pass it on.
Madam Speaker?
Yes. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon, you have a motion?
Having voted on the prevailing side by which the House engrossed, the House Bill 15, I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Madam Speaker, I move that we take House Bill 15 by for the day.
All those in favor of each week going by for the day, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. HB 15 will go by for the day.
House Bill 100, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 19.2262.01 relating to voir dire examination of persons called as jurors, criminal case.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 72, nays 27, abstentions zero.
Ayes 72, nays 27, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 145, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 22.123.3 relating to public elementary and secondary schools' treatment of transgender students' policies.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 61, nays 37, abstentions zero.
Ayes 61, nays 37, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 15, House Bill 256, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.2415 of the Code of Virginia relating to disorderly conduct students.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 61, nays 37, abstentions zero.
Ayes 61, nays 37, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 375, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 23.1230 of the Code of Virginia relating to post-secondary schools' enrollment agreements, disputes, arbitration.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 75, nays 23, abstentions zero.[1574.01][1574.01](Applause)
Ayes 75, nays 23, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 16, House Bill 634 has gone by for the day. House Bill 719, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2608 and 3034.4:1 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 2.2608.1 relating to administration of government, general provisions, state publications to be made available in electronic format.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 98, nays 1, abstentions zero.
Ayes 98, nays 1, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 17, House Bill 744, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 16.1272 of the Code of Virginia relating to sentencing of juvenile tried as adult.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 71, nays 27, abstentions zero.
Ayes 71, nays 27, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
House Bill 753, a bill to require the Department of Education to develop guidance standards for social-emotional learning for all public school students' report.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 72, nays 26, abstentions zero.
Ayes 72, nays 26, abstentions zero, the bill passes.
Page 18, House Bill 817, a bill to require the Department of Education in collaboration with the Department of Health and medical professional societies to develop and implement health and safety best practice guidelines for the use of digital devices in public schools.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 85, nays 13, abstentions 1.
Ayes 85, nays 13, abstentions 1, the bill passes.
House Bill 913, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 23.1808 of the Code of Virginia relating to institutions of higher education, sexual violence, immunity from disciplinary action for certain students who make reports.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 92, nays 6, abstentions zero.
Ayes 92, nays 6, abstentions zero, the bill passes.[1778.15][1778.15](Applause)
House Bill 19, sorry, page 19, House Bill 995, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 18.223 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to grand larceny and certain property crimes threshold.
Shall the Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes fifty-eight, nays forty, abstentions one.
Ayes fifty-eight, nays forty, abstentions one, the bill passes.
House Bill ten-eighty-two, a bill to amend and reenact Sections forty-four, one-forty-six-point-sixteen of the Code of Virginia relating to emergency services and disaster law, definition of disaster, incidents involving cyber systems.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes ninety-four, nays four, abstentions zero.
Ayes ninety-four, nays four, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill thirteen-sixty-one, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Title fifty-nine-point-one, a chapter numbered twenty-two-point-fourteen consisting of a section numbered fifty-nine-point-one, two-eighty-four-point-thirty-three relating to the Truck Manufacturing Grant Fund, creation.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes ninety, nays nine, abstentions zero.
Ayes ninety, nays nine, abstention zero, the bill passes.
Page twenty, House Bill fourteen-ninety-eight, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Title fifty-nine-point-one, a chapter numbered twenty-two-point-fourteen consisting of sections numbered fifty-nine-point-one, two-eighty-four-point-thirty-three, and other sections relating to Pharmaceutical Manufacturing Grant Program.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes ninety-one, nays seven, abstentions zero.
Ayes ninety-one, nays seven, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House Bill fifteen-ninety-seven, a bill to amend and reenact Sections two-point-two, twenty-four, eighty-nine of the Code of Virginia relating to Go Virginia Grants, Matching Funds.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes ninety-three, nays six, abstentions zero.
Ayes ninety-three, nays six, abstention zero, the bill passes.
Page twenty-one, House Bill nine-twenty-eight, a bill to permit the Chesterfield County School Board to establish a regional recovery high school.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes ninety-four, nays four, abstentions zero.
Ayes ninety-four, nays four, abstention zero, the bill passes.
Returning to page three of the calendar, House Bill one-oh-four, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter four of Title twenty-three-point-one, a section numbered twenty-three-point-one, four-twelve relating to public institutions of higher education, non-academic student codes of conduct.
Shall the bill pass? The Clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes forty-six, nays twelve, abstentions zero.
Ayes eighty-six, nays twelve, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House bills on second reading uncontested calendar. Page twenty-one, House Bill one-eighty, a bill to amend and reenact Sections thirty-two-point-one, two-sixty-seven of the Code of Virginia relating to records of marriage, identification of race, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
The Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Madam Speaker, I would move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, substitute is agreed to. Delegate Levine.
Madam Speaker, HB one-eighty removes a longstanding and unconstitutional requirement that Virginians state their race on their marriage licenses and divorce reports. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-two, House Bill three-sixty-two, a bill to amend and reenact Sections fifty-four-point-one, twenty-nine-eighty-three-point-two of the Code of Virginia relating to capacity determinations, physician assistant, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with amendments.
The Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill three-sixty-two adds physician assistants and nurse practitioners to the list of healthcare practitioners that can make the determination to—for a patient who's incapable of making an informed decision with regards to their advanced directive. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill three-eighty-five, a bill to amend and reenact Sections fifty-four-point-one, twenty-nine-hundred of the Code of Virginia relating to practice of chiropractic, definition, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with amendment.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the committee, I move the committee amendment.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the amendment is agreed to. Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker, HB three-eighty-five is a more precise and accurate description in the Code of the practice of chiropractic. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-three, House Bill four-fourteen, a bill to amend and reenact Sections sixty-seven, seven-oh-one of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Energy Plan, covenants regarding social—solar power, reasonable restrictions, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill four-fourteen defines unreasonable restrictions as they relate to homeowners being barred from installing solar panels on their homes by their respective HOAs. This bill will enable more homeowners to install solar on their privately-owned homes. I hope it is the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-three, House Bill four-seventy-nine, a bill to amend and reenact Sections thirty-two-point-one, two-seventy-three of the Code of Virginia relating to death certificate, veterans, fees, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
The Delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adopt the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Kilgore.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill four-seventy-nine expands the list of parties eligible to obtain a free certified copy of a veteran's death certificate to include a funeral director if so requested by the surviving spouse of the veteran. Hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill five-seventy-five, a bill to amend and reenact Sections fifty-six, five-ninety-six-point-two of the Code of Virginia relating to electric utilities, energy efficiency programs, stakeholder process, reported from labor and commerce.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, back in 2018 when we passed a comprehensive grid modernization bill, we added some provisions that would require our utilities to add more energy efficiency programs, and as part of that, we created a couple of stakeholder processes. As at the meeting now, we learned that we need to add some more guidelines on what kind of stakeholders and the efficiencies they need to have, so that's what this bill will do. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-four, House Bill five-eighty-six, a bill to require the Commissioner of Health to convene a work group to study the currents of PFOA, PFOS, and other PFAS in the Commonwealth's Public Drinking Water Report, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Guzman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill five-eighty-six commissions a work group to sample and examine the prevalence of PFOS and PFAS compounds in the sixteen largest waterworks in Virginians, which serve fifty-nine percent of the population. These harmful chemicals have been linked to increases in kidney and liver cancers, as well as low infant birth weights, thyroid disruptions, and fertility issues, and I hope it's the will of this body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill six-forty-one, a bill to amend and reenact Sections fifty-four-point-one, twenty-eight-oh-eight-point-three of the Code of Virginia relating to funeral service providers, caskets provided by third parties, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with amendment.
The Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the amendment is agreed to. Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill six-forty-one allows that consumers are now going to be able to use caskets that they are able to purchase, not necessarily from a licensed funeral service establishment or a funeral service licensee, but it also does say that those funeral service establishments or licensees shall be required to store a casket when preneed arrangements have been made, that they don't have to do that, and that any non-funeral service establishment or licensee still needs to follow same—similar consumer protections in federal and state law. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-five, House Bill six-sixty-one has been referred to appropriations. House Bill six-eighty-eight, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article four of Chapter three of Title thirty-two-point-one, a section numbered thirty-two-point-one, ninety-two-point-three relating to community health workers certification, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
The Delegate from Petersburg, Delegate Ayer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Ayer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill six-eighty-eight will establish uniform standards for community health workers by creating a definition in the Code for them and designating the Virginia Department of Health as the agency responsible for overseeing the process by which they are certified. I hope the body will pass this bill on to its third reading.
House Bill seven-twenty-three, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered fifty-six, two-fifty-seven-point-five relating to underground utility lines, agricultural operation, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
It's very hard to hear. Please go to the back room if you need to speak. Delegate from Loudon, Delegate Reed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Reed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Given that agriculture is the leading industry in Virginia and we need to protect our prime agricultural land, House Bill seven-twenty-three requires developers of pipelines and transmission lines to use best practices to preserve prime agricultural soils that their projects may disrupt. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-six, House Bill seven-ninety-five, a bill to amend and reenact Sections thirty-eight-point-two, thirty-four, thirty-one, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to health insurance association health plans, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill seventy-nine—uh, seven-ninety-five is the Association Health Plan Bill. It allows trade associations to pool their members together to be treated as a large group like any other large employer for the purposes of obtaining a cheaper health insurance. The bill has addressed many of the issues that were raised last year by the administration. It has robust coverage requirements that prevent skinny plans. It instead requires and expressly writes out that association health plans provide all essential health benefits required under the ACA, that they comply with coverage mandates applicable to large group market plans offered in Virginia. It prohibits discrimination on the basis of pre-existing conditions, requires all of the employees or self-employed individuals who are enrolled in coverage to be treated as a single-risk pool, and sets premiums based on the collective group experience of the employees or self-employed individuals, not them individually. So, I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill eight-twenty-two, a bill to amend and reenact Sections thirty-eight-point-two, thirty-four-oh-seven-point-ten, colon, one of the Code of Virginia relating to health insurance reimbursement for services rendered during pendency of credentialing application, reported from labor and commerce with amendments.
The Delegate from Baton Rouge, Delegate Head.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Head.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill eight-twenty-two simply takes the mechanism that we put in place a couple of years ago for credentialing of physicians and makes it apply to all providers that are covered by health plans. Hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page twenty-seven, House Bill eight-thirty-five, a bill to amend and reenact Sections fifty-six-eight-eight and fifty-six-ninety of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered fifty-six-ninety-point-two relating to the Utility Transfers Act, Water and Sewer Utilities, Sales of Assets, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker and ladies and gentlemen of the House, HB eight-thirty-five is a bill that will come into play when a municipality chooses to sell its water or wastewater system to a private operator. It directs the State Corporation Commission to develop guidelines for determining the fair market value and the process used to calculate base rates. This will bring Virginia in line with our neighboring states and attract capital investment into the Commonwealth, particularly in the more rural areas of the Commonwealth. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill eight-forty, a bill to amend and reenact Sections—section thirty-eight-point-two, forty-three-nineteen of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered thirty-eight-point-two, thirty-four-eighteen-point-eighteen relating to health insurance, medicines, formula, and internal nutrition products, reported from labor and commerce with amendment.
The Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the amendment.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill eight-forty would ensure coverage for medically necessary formulas for those born with extremely rare inherited metabolic diseases—disorders. They are individuals who need this formula to survive. Madam Speaker, I hope it is the pleasure of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill nine-forty-one has gone by for the day. Page twenty-eight, House Bill nine-fifty, a bill to amend and reenact Sections fifty-four-point-one, twenty-three-twelve of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of Professional and Occupational Regulation, cemeteries, exemptions, reported from general laws.
The Delegate from Westmoreland, Delegate Ranson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
If you don't believe we have a substitute, the House will be at ease.
Madam Speaker?
Yes. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Can House Bill nine-fifty go by temporarily?
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, HB nine-fifty will go by temporarily.
House Bill nine-ninety, a bill to amend and reenact Sections two-point-two, two-two-one, and two-point-two, two-thirty of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of Military Affairs, Change of Secretariat, reported from general laws.
The Delegate from Loudon, Delegate Reed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill nine-ninety is actually statutorily transferring and assigning the Virginia Department of Military Affairs to the Secretary of Veterans and Defense Affairs. This is codifying the intent and the direction of Governor Northam's Executive Order twenty from September two thousand nineteen. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill nine-ninety-three, a bill to amend and reenact Sections two-point-two, twenty-four—fort—forty-nine of the Code and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to administration of government, boards, and councils, cleanup, reported from general laws.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, can this bill go by temporarily?
All those in favor of HB 993 going by temporarily say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, 993 goes by temporarily.
House Bill 997, a bill to repeal the fourth and fifth enactments of Chapter 189 of the Acts of Assembly of 2017 as amended by Chapters 146 and 278 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018, and to repeal the fourth and fifth enactments of Chapter 751 of the Acts of Assembly of 2017 as amended by Chapters 146 and 278 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018 relating to Child Care Providers Fingerprint-Based Criminal Background Checks, Sunset and Contingency, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Converse Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 997 repeals the sunset date on a measure that requires individuals to undergo fingerprint-based background checks for childcare staff scheduled to expire this July. This legislation will allow the Department of Social Services to continue the current practice and regulation of comprehensive childcare background checks. I hope it is the pleasure of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1006, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 63.2, 1506.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to Human Trafficking Assessments by Local Departments, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, the sex trafficking assessment was created last session as part of the Crime Commission's efforts to address commercial sex trafficking in Virginia. The assessment provides social service departments with a mechanism to intervene when a child is being sex trafficked. This human trafficking assessment will provide social service departments with the authority to intervene in both sex and labor trafficking cases. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1059, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 54.1, 2957.01 of the Code of Virginia relating to Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetists, Prescriptive Authority, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions with amendment.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 362 will extend to Certified Registered Nurse, and that has the same prescriptive authority as other nurse practitioners. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 30, House Bill 1240, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 38.2, 316 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Regulation of Legal Services Plans, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Rockingham, Delegate Wilt.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 1240 simply seeks to modernize and streamline the framework for regulation of legal service organizations, and there's no known opposition, and it came out of the Subcommittee unopposed, and I move that it be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to.
House Bill 1273, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 38.2, 4319 of the Code of Virginia and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 2 of Chapter 8 of Title 32.1 a section numbered 32.1, 297.2, and by adding a section numbered 38.2, 3418.18 relating to organ eye or tissue transplantation, discrimination prohibited, reported from labor and commerce.
The delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1273 prohibits discrimination in organ eye and tissue transplants on the basis of disability. It does not require insurance to cover medically inappropriate transplants, but does require them to be covered if for no other reason than disability. So, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1280, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 56, 585.1:9 of the Code of Virginia relating to Electric Utilities Broadband Capacity Pilot Program, reported from labor and commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1280 will allow investor-owned utilities to utilize excess broadband capacity to offset any cost for ratepayers and will help expand rural broadband options. So, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page 31, House Bill 1304, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 54.1, 3300 and 54.1, 3321 of the Code of Virginia relating to Pharmacy Technicians and Pharmacy Technician Trainees Registration, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions with substitute.
The delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1304 amends eligibility criteria for registration as a pharmacy technician. It also defines pharmacy technician trainee and sets requirements for registration as a pharmacy technician trainee. Hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1431, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2, 2400 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Art and Architectural Review Board, Members Quorum, reported from General Laws with amendments.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Mugler.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Mugler.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 1431 is an amendment to the Art and Architectural Review Board to add one additional member clarification on member voting and member staggering and a majority quorum. I move, Madam Speaker, that this bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Page 32, House Bill 1455, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 46.2, 819.3:1 of the Code of Virginia relating to Unpaid Tolls, Mail, reported from Transportation.
The delegate from Portsmouth, Delegate Heretic.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1455 simply adds that a toll operator can seek collection of unpaid tolls against a vehicle owner by presentment of a first-class mail certificate, mailing receipt, in addition to other forms of service. I ask the House to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1457, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 13.1, 514 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Securities Act, Exemption for Certain Non-Issuer Distributions, reported from labor and commerce.
The delegate from Washington, Delegate O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1457 amends the Virginia Securities Act so that financial advisors can give advice to clients, whether positive or negative, regarding companies listed on the OTCQX market, gives investors more information and helps Virginia companies grow and increase their liquidity. So, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Madam Speaker?
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
I rise for motion.
Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, having voted on the prevailing side by which we passed House Bill 145, I move that we reconsider that motion so that a member can record her vote properly. Let's see if it's important.
All those in favor of reconsidering HB 145 shall say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All those in favor of HB 145 will vote on the electronic voting board.
Madam Speaker?
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate Gilbert, you have the floor.
It may be some other inquiry. Could the members be alerted to the page number so that they can get a handle on what they're about to do?
Page 14 of the calendar, House Bill 145.
Shall HB 145 pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 62, nays 36, abstentions zero.
Ayes 62, nays 36, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
Returning to page 28 of the calendar, House Bill 950, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 54.1, 2312 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of Professional and Occupational Regulation, Cemeteries, Exception.
Delegate from Westmoreland, Delegate Ranson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for a motion.
Delegate Ranson.
I'd like to move that this go by for the day so that we can take it up and prepare a floor substitute.
All those in favor of HB 950 going by for the day say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, HB 950 goes by for the day.
Returning to page 28 of the calendar, House Bill 993, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.2, 2449 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to Administration of Government, Boards and Councils, Cleanup, reported from General Laws.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, HB 993 is a cleanup bill, as the clerk has so ably stated. It changes the number of board members from 21 to 26 so that it matches up with consistency across all boards. It also staggers the election or terms of service for their respective members. I'd ask that the bill be engrossed and passed on to the third reading.
Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bills are engrossed and passed on to their third reading.
House Bills on second reading, regular calendar. Page 14, House Bill 15 has gone by for the day. Page 32, House Bill 134, by for the day. Page 33, House Bill 1491, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 22.1, 203.4 relating to Student Voters, Virginia Voter Registration, reported from Education with amendment.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Guy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Guy.
I think all of us here are in favor of improved levels of civic involvement by our youth. This bill would contribute to that endeavor by instructing our local public school divisions to facilitate voter registration of students as they reach voting age by either providing a paper-mail copy of registration materials or making access available to the online voter registration form during the school day. The bill is wholeheartedly supported by the League of Women Voters, which conducts voluntary activities of this nature in schools throughout the Commonwealth, and I hope that it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 33 of the calendar, House Bill 7, by for the day. House Bill 55, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 13.1, 301 and other sections of the Code of Virginia consisting and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 3 of Title 13.1 and Article Number 3, consisting of Sections numbered 13.1, 346 through 13.1, 355 relating to Worker Cooperative, reported from Labor and Commerce.
The delegate from Manassas, Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 55 creates a category of cooperative association that more closely matches the ownership structure of worker-owned cooperative associations. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 34, House Bill 66, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 38.2, 3407.15:5 relating to Health Insurance, Pharmacy Benefits, Cost-Sharing Payments for Prescription Insulin Drugs, reported from Labor and Commerce.
The delegate from Manassas, Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 66 limits the co-pay amount to no more than $30 for a one-month supply of prescription insulin. If passed, Virginia will be the third state to implement a cap on their insulin co-pays behind Colorado and Illinois, which have each limited theirs to $100. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to?
No.
I believe there's a committee substitute. HB 66 will go by. All those in favor of HB 66 going by temporarily say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, HB 66 goes by temporarily.
House Bill 340, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 7 of Title 44 a section numbered 44, 209 relating to Emergency Laws, Civil Relief, Citizens of the Commonwealth Furloughed or Otherwise Not Receiving Wages or Payments Due to Closure of the Federal Government, reported from General Laws with amendments.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Price.
Yes, Madam Speaker and members, if you'll recall, in 2019, this body unanimously passed Senate Bill 1737 to Help Federal Workers in Virginia Impacted by the Federal Government Shutdown. That expired in September of 2019, and House Bill 340 would make those provisions permanently in place for future instances of furloughs. The amendments establish that the furlough must last 14 days in order to trigger the provisions and establishes that these provisions are only applicable within 90 days after the furlough ends. Lastly, House Bill 340, as amended, would grant a tenant a 60-day continuance of an unlawful detainer action from the initial court date, and homeowners and landlords a 30-day continuance. I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 35, House Bill 386, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 24 of Title 54.1 a section numbered 54.1, 2409.5 relating to Department of Health Professions Conversion Therapy Prohibited, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions with amendments.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the body. House Bill 386 would prohibit any healthcare provider or person who performs counseling as part of his training for his any profession licensed by the Department of Health Professions from engaging in conversion therapy with any person under the age of 18 years, and provides that such counseling constitutes unprofessional conduct in his grounds for disciplinary action. Passage of this law, Madam Speaker, members of the body, would make Virginia the 20th state to ban conversion therapy. Hope it will be a pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 36, House Bill 432, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 56, 235.1:2 relating to Public Utility Rate-Making, Reasonableness of Costs of Contracting with Small Women-Owned or Minority-Owned Businesses, reported from Labor and Commerce with amendment.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill four thirty-two establishes that public utilities may forego the lowest bid from contractors or subcontractors up to three percent of the lowest bid if the business is a certified small woman-owned or minority-owned business. I urge the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate Freitas.
Will the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I will yield.
The delegate will yield. Delegate Freitas.
The question I would have for the delegate, as I understand this, what this is doing is it's creating something where, as the government's looking at respective bids, if a woman owner or minority-owned small business is technically more expensive but not to exceed five percent, they could actually get preferential treatment over another company that was bidding. Is that an accurate representation of what this would do?
Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would tell the delegate that his representation is incorrect.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate please correct my confusion on this?
Will the delegate yield?
I will yield.
The delegate will yield.
So, for clarification, it's up to three percent, and what this is, is a way for small women, minority-owned businesses to be able to be more competitive, and instead of just accepting the lowest bid, up to three percent of the lowest bid if it's a small women or minority-owned business, that can be chosen as the contractor or the subcontractor.
I think the... Madam Speaker, will the delegate yield for another question?
Will the delegate yield?
I will yield for one last question.
She will yield.
Madam Speaker, would this discriminate based off of sex?
Delegate Carol Foy.
I would... Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate to clarify his question.
Delegate Freitas, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, for a point, equality of rights under the law shall not be... Let me see here... Denied or abridged on account of... Denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. It appears to me that, in this particular case, if I were to submit a bid for this, and it was a woman-owned small business, they would actually have a competitive advantage. Is this the law discriminating based off of sex?
Delegate Carol Foy.
Madam Speaker, I would tell the delegate that the bill is what the bill says, and so what it does is it provides up to three percent of a cushion for small women and minority-owned businesses to be able to bid for utility contracts. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Freitas, you have the floor.
The bottom line is, the answer is yes. This does discriminate based off of sex, among other things. So essentially, if another small business was to compete for this, and they weren't a minority or they weren't a woman-owned small business, they would now be put at a competitive disadvantage to the woman-owned small business. And again, this is a number one of the unintended consequences when we look at things at the ERA, and I think a lot of us are getting a little bit frustrated because we bring up points like this, and then we're then told that equal means equal. And what we're seeing through legislation like this is that equal means equal when some people want it to mean equal, and it means something different where you can actually discriminate based off of sex in order to give someone an economic advantage. And so I would just appreciate a little intellectual consistency with respect to this position. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Price, you have the floor.
Yes, and as the gentleman was talking about intellect, I wanted to raise a point that a lot of women know through lived experience, and that is that the playing field is not level. So what the bill does is help level the playing field. So as he's talking about economic advantage, I would love to be able to say that women in Virginia were not discriminated against when it comes to these bids, so that we can say it would be an economic advantage, and bills like these would not be needed. But today, I think House Bill four thirty-two does a great job of getting us closer.
Madam Speaker?
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
For News, yield for a question.
Will the delegate yield? The House will be at ease. Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the patron yield for quick grammar clarification? Question, I guess, question's the right way regarding grammar.
Delegate Davis, who are you asking the question to?
Yeah, would the patron yield for a question, ma'am?
Will Delegate Carol Foy yield to a question?
I will yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Davis.
The question I have, because I wasn't that great in English class, but... So if I read this properly, is it that a small or woman-owned or minority-owned business would get this benefit? In other words, if a business is a woman-owned but not small, would they have a benefit over a small business that's not woman or minority?
Delegate Carol Foy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would tell the delegate that it is a business that has been certified as a small woman-owned or minority-owned business by the Department of Small Business and Supplier Diversity.
Madam Speaker, would the speaker yield for a question for clarification?
Will the delegate yield?
I will not yield. This... This bill has been properly vetted, it's gone before committee, and I believe the delegate was there and present and asked a number of questions, and so I will no longer yield. Thank you.
And would the speaker... Would the delegate from Newport News yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I encourage the gentleman to speak to the bill. I do not yield.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill at the appropriate time.
Delegate Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, here's my concern with this, if I'm reading this properly, and I think I am, that what this does is it does not give a small and woman-owned and minority-business preference over another non-woman-owned minority... or non-woman-owned small business. If I'm reading this properly, it actually will give a very large woman-owned businesses... business preferential treatment over a very small, non-minority, non-woman-owned business. So whatever we think about whether there should still be preference or not with regards to women-owned businesses, what this actually does is puts a woman-owned business above small businesses, even if they're large businesses themselves. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate McQuinn.
I move the pending question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill five forty-seven, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in title sixty-seven, a chapter numbered seventeen, consisting of a section numbered sixty-seven, seventeen hundred relating to Virginia Energy and Economy Transition Council Report.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill five forty-seven establishes the Virginia Energy and Economy Transition Council. The council is tasked with developing a plan to assist the Commonwealth in the economic development transition as we move from fossil fuel to clean energy. I hope it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill five seventy-six, a bill to amend and reenact section fifty-six, five eighty-five, point one, colon, five of the Code of Virginia relating to electric utility regulation, underground electric transmission line pilot program.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill five seventy-six is a bill that goes back to a couple of years ago when the General Assembly required the State Corporation Commission to look at various different projects that are pending, to see if any two of those projects can be put underground as far as power lines, the transmission lines going through certain communities. They found one project, and they allowed for that to be approved under the State Corporation Commission, but the second project has not been found yet. The deadline for that is coming up in July, and if we don't extend the deadline now, that funding and the commitment by the utilities to do an underground project will just disappear. And so this is a way to first give a little bit of extension for three months, and also to tweak the criteria so that we may be able to find a project in Virginia that might qualify for this. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page thirty-seven, House Bill seven fifty-seven, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding sections numbered two point two, twenty-eight twelve, point one, and fifteen point two, fifteen oh five, point three relating to public employment, limitations on inquiries by state agencies and localities regarding criminal arrests, charges, or convictions, reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Petersburg, Delegate Ayer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Ayer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill seven five seven would codify existing practice at the state level here in Virginia by prohibiting state agencies from including on any employment application a question inquiring whether the prospective employee has ever been arrested. This substitute language would apply to also localities, and it would also... it has defined sensitive positions and defined and added school board positions. I would hope it would be the pleasure of this body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
The delegate from Spontylvania, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Cole, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Speaker and members of the House, I just want to make sure everybody understands what this bill does and does not do. All this bill does is say that you cannot ask someone if they have a criminal record on the job application. It does not prevent an employer from holding that against them and disqualifying them if they do have a criminal conviction. The end effect of this is just to waste time. If the employer and the position would not be appropriate for somebody with a criminal background, if they do not want to hire someone with a criminal background, the best way to handle it is to allow the employer to ask that on the application, so they don't go through the process of calling someone in for an interview, making them an offer contingent on a background check, and then when the background check comes back, they end up withdrawing the offer. That's the situation that this bill will create, and I hope that we will not engross it and pass it to its third reading.
Delegate from Petersburg, Delegate Ayer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Ayer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to also clarify what this bill does, because the last time I checked, it was not a waste of time to take deliberate action to give people a fair shot at employment opportunities. This legislation has, like I said previously, is codifying existing practice here in the Commonwealth, and it's my understanding that because we have individuals who are racist, who are biased, and who do discriminate, they will not give people a fair opportunity when the question is merely even on the application. So this gives people a fair chance, and it has shown already, by no shortage of data, that thirty percent more people who have a criminal history have now been able to get an opportunity at employment because the question did not exist. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill ten thirty, a bill to amend and reenact section fifty-six, five eighty-five, point one, colon, five of the Code of Virginia relating to electric utility regulation pilot program for undergrounding electrical transmission lines, reported from Labor and Commerce.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the substitute.
I do not believe we have a substitute.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker.
We do not have a committee substitute.
All right, well then I'll say, I will move the amendment... I move the committee amendment. Can I pass this by temporarily, please?
All those in favor of HB ten thirty going by temporarily say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, HB ten thirty will go by temporarily.
House Bill ten forty-one, a bill to amend and reenact sections thirty-two point one, two sixty-one, and thirty-two point one, two sixty-nine of the Code of Virginia relating to Board of Health Certificate of Birth Change of Sex, reported from Health Welfare and Institutions with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, this is a bill that makes it a little bit easier and quicker for people to change their birth certificate after a change of sex. It brings it in line with what we do for driver's licenses, passports, and other important documents. I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading?
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Loudon, Delegate LaRocque.
Madam Speaker, a question for the patron.
Will the delegate yield?
Madam Speaker, I decline to yield.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page thirty-eight, House Bill ten forty-two, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in chapter twenty-six of title two point two, an article numbered thirty-six consisting of sections numbered two point two, twenty-six ninety-nine point eight through two point two, twenty-six ninety-nine point thirteen relating to Environmental Justice Council, reported from General Laws with substitute.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, HB ten forty-two establishes the Virginia Council on Environmental Justice, codifying an advisory board existing of twenty-seven members, which will advise the governor and provide recommendations that maintain a foundation of environmental justice principles intended to protect vulnerable communities from disproportionate impact of pollution and displacement. The bill includes language that specifies the council's membership shall be representatives of traditionally underserved and underrepresented groups, including Native American tribes, grassroots organizations, civil rights advocates, and members of impacted communities. The proposal delegates the Secretary of Natural Resources and the governor's office as providing staff support. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill ten forty-nine has gone by for the day. House Bill twelve seventeen has gone by for the day. Page forty, House Bill twelve fifty-seven, a bill to amend and reenact section thirty-two point one, one sixty-nine of the Code of Virginia relating to drinking water maximum contaminant levels, PFAS compounds, other contaminants, reported from Health Welfare and Institutions with amendments.
The delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to. Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, this directs the Board of Health to establish state maximum contaminant levels of so-called forever chemicals found in our public drinking water systems. I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
The delegate from Caroline, Delegate O'Rourke.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate O'Rourke, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, just to draw your attention, we have already passed today, in the uncontested block, House Bill five eighty-six unanimously, calling for a study in this very area. The results of that study are due to be before us by the end of this calendar year. In all the tenure that I've been down here, I've never known of an occasion... when on the one hand we say we wanted an agency to study the matter, to tell us how much of a problem it is, and in the exact same session, and in this case, the exact same day, we're saying, "We're going to do a study, but by the way, we know we're going to have to do some regulations before we even do the study." I just think that's terribly inconsistent. I don't directly oppose, per se, what's in this bill before us because I don't know, and I just think it's premature and hope the body will reject the bill.
The delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Rasool, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the comments from the gentleman from Caroline. In fact, my bill is broader, and what it does is allows to set these maximum contaminant levels based upon all available information. Some available information has already been studied by the EPA and by other entities such as a variety of qualified institutions that have provided some of this information. So I believe that the Board of Health will be able to determine if there's adequate scientific information out there to set these maximum contaminant levels, they can proceed to do so. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1333 has gone by for the day. Page 41, House Bill 1429 has gone by for the day. House Bill 1503, a bill to amend and reenact Section 38.2, 3418.17 of the Code of Virginia relating to health insurance coverage for autism spectrum disorder, reported from Labor and Commerce.
The delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to move the committee substitute.
The House will be at ease. Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? HB 1503. All those in favor?
Aye!
All those opposed? Committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1503 requires health insurance to provide coverage for the diagnosis and treatment of autism spectrum disorder. Virginia has made significant progress in covering the children and families in need of ABA therapy and other essential therapies by eliminating the age gap. This bill will close the gap in coverage for Virginians with small group and individual plans. The size of a child's parents' group insurance plan should not prevent them from receiving these desperately needed, life-changing treatments. I hope it's a pleasure of this body to engross the bill and send it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1514, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.2, 3901 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Human Rights Act, Discrimination on the Basis of Race, Hairstyle, Type, or Texture, reported from general laws.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask the House Bill 1514, go by for the day.
All those in favor of HB 1514, go by for the day, say aye. All those opposed, 1514 will go by for the day.
Returning to page 34 of the calendar, House Bill 66 went by temporarily. A bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 38.2, 3407.15:5 relating to health insurance, pharmacy benefits, cost-sharing payments for prescription insulin drugs, reported from Labor and Commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Anassas, Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Carter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to all of you for your patience with this. There were two problems, one with IHOD and one with the patron's brain. This substitute incorporates a similar bill patroned by the delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Leftwich. Now, House Bill 66 will cap insulin co-pays to no more than $30 for a one-month supply. Virginia will be the third state to implement such a cap if this should go into effect, and with that, I hope it will be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Page 37 of the calendar, House Bill 1030 went by temporarily. A bill to amend and reenact Section 56, 585.1:5 of the Code of Virginia relating to Electric Utility Regulation, Pilot Program for Undergrounding Electrical Transmission Lines, reported from Labor and Commerce.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Rome.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to motion for the bill to pass by for the day and then briefly speak to that motion.
All those in favor of 1030 going by for the day shall say aye. All those opposed, 1030 goes by for the day. Delegate Rome, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just for my constituents who are watching this back home, basically, there's just a technical issue on the backend of the reporting of this bill out from the committee, so there's not a language issue that's going on. We just need the weekend just to fix that up, and so we'll be bringing it back up on Monday.
Madam Speaker?
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I have a motion.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, having voted on the prevailing side by which we voted to engross, House Bill 432, I move that we reconsider that vote on page... 37, as is shown on the electronic board up there.
Page 36. All those in favor of...
Reconsidering?
Reconsidering HB 432 shall say aye. All those opposed, HB 432 is reconsidered. Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I believe that I just turned in a floor amendment to the clerk, which I could speak to briefly.
Will the clerk report the floor amendment?
She's trying to make sense of my handwriting, I believe.
Floor amendment to House Bill 432, proposed by Delegate Simon, page 1, line 25, after provision... Strike, 2.2, 1609, insert 2.2, 1604.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, it was brought to our attention after the debate that the code section referenced in the bill was incorrect, and there's, I think, probably a typographical error, and so this line amendment fixes that technical error. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to adopt the amendment so we can reengross the bill.
All those in favor of the floor amendment shall say aye. All those opposed, the floor amendment is adopted. Delegate, Delegate Simon? Shall HB 432 with the floor amendment be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Resolutions on regular calendar, page 42, House Joint Resolution 148 has gone by until February 6. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, with the consent and support of the gentleman from Fairfax and the gentleman from Campbell, and having voted on the prevailing side, I move that the body reconsider the motion to go by for the day on HB 15, on page 15.
Delegate Sickles requests that HB 15 go by for the day.
Reconsider the motion.
Delegate Sickles moves that HB 15 reconsidered. All those in favor of the motion shall say aye. All those opposed, HB 15 is reconsidered. Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate Sickles.
I move that HB 15 be re-referred to the Committee on Appropriations.
All those in favor of HB 15 being re-referred to the Committee on Appropriations shall say aye. All those opposed, HB 15 is re-referred to appropriations. Per House Rule 51, the House has returned to morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
One announcement before the meeting schedule, the final reminder that your statement of economic interests are due Monday. I'd encourage you not to wait till the last minute. Meetings for Friday, January 31. Appropriations, Compensation and General Government Subcommittee Meeting, this is an additional meeting, meets immediately upon adjournment of the House in the shared committee room. House Appropriations, this is a change in time. House Appropriations meets immediately upon adjournment of the Compensation and General Government Subcommittee in the shared committee room. Rules Committee meets immediately upon adjournment of the House, House Room 1. Courts of Justice Committee, change in time, meets immediately upon the adjournment of House Rules Committee, House Room 3. House Courts of Justice Civil Subcommittee meets immediately upon adjournment of full committee, House Room 1. House Courts of Justice Criminal Subcommittee meets immediately upon adjournment of full committee, House Room 3. House County Cities and Towns, additional meeting immediately upon adjournment of House, House Committee Room. House County Cities and Towns is having an additional meeting immedi... Sorry. Meetings for Monday, February 3. Education, SOL and SOQ Subcommittee, this is a change in time, 7:00 AM, House Committee Room. Communications Technology and Innovation Communications Subcommittee, 8:00 AM, House Room 3. Finance Subcommittee Number 1, change in location, 8:00 AM, 400C Subcommittee Room. Finance Subcommittee Number 2, change in location, 8:00 AM, 400A Subcommittee Room. Health, Welfare, and Institutions Behavioral Health Subcommittee, change in time, 8:00 AM, 400B Subcommittee Room. Appropriations Capital Outlay Subcommittee has been canceled for Monday morning. Education Committee meets 9:00 AM, House Committee Room. Communications Technology and Innovation meets 10:00 AM, House Room 3. The Republican Caucus meets 11:00 AM, House Room 2. Democratic Caucus, 11:00 AM, House Room 1.
The delegate from Fairfax County, Delegate Corey.
Madam Speaker, I was simply going to announce what the kind clerk just announced about the special meeting of CCNT after this session adjourns. Thank you.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move when the House adjourns today, and adjourn to reconvene Monday, February 3, 2020, at 12 noon.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that when the House adjourn today, it move to reconvene Monday, February 3, 2020, at 12 o'clock noon. As many as favor the motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Monday, February 3, 2020, at 12 o'clock noon.